Thank you, everyone in the audience for the indulgence there. We've, I was just mentioning, this is the first time in my time on the commission that we actually haven't had a quorum. So, we need five, we have four. And so, I'll recap the conversation really briefly. It just basically means that we can't take a vote tonight, that we will ultimately refer any decision-making on the work plan for two weeks until our next, our next meeting. We have a, normally have a very diligent group of commissioners, so I promise you that they are going to read the minutes, potentially listen to the audio, they will hear your testimony as well as us. You're also welcome to come back in two weeks if you would like to. But, we're gonna proceed with the meeting tonight. We're gonna have the staff presentation, we'll take public testimony, and the only thing we're not gonna do is take a vote on this before we leave. So, hope that's helpful, appreciate everybody's time. We always start these meetings off with an opportunity for public comment that is not related to anything on our agenda. So, if you're here to discuss the work plan, I know I have several folks who have asked to provide some public testimony tonight, if you have anything completely unrelated to the work plan that you would like to discuss with the commission, now would be a great time to do that. Okay? Not seeing anyone come up, so we will go ahead and move to the staff presentation, and go from there. Jennifer. Karen?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Karen Buhrig, I'm the Transportation Planning Supervisor, and I'm here with Jennifer Hughes, Principal Land Use Planner. And we're here to talk with you about the Long Range Planning Work Program for fiscal year 2018-2019. So, as you probably recall, you may recall, and I'm not actually sure, maybe some of you are new, but every year, the long-range planning staff pulls together the, a work program for the following year. We also, basically, provide an opportunity for citizen groups, CPOs, other departments, and other agencies to identify potential projects that we could work on in the following year. So, we came back, and we started this process back in September, where we put out a notification to all of the interested parties, and started gathering different ideas. We collected ideas until the end of November, and then, you may recall that in December, we came and shared the ideas with you, as well as heard your ideas. So, the purpose of today's meeting is to provide an opportunity for the public to come and talk about the proposed work program. And they can provide public testimony on the draft recommendation that staff has put together and is before you tonight. Tonight, and as Commissioner Pascoe mentioned, that you'll be able to hear testimony, I'm not quite sure if you guys will talk about it at all, we'll see how that goes, right? Are they just hearing testimony, but no deliberation? Okay. So, tonight you'll be hearing testimony. So, this opportunity was publicized widely throughout news releases, and the coordinated newsletter, social media, and different things like that. So, how is gonna, we're gonna go tonight, is I'm gonna talk a little bit about the background, as I have, and then Jennifer's gonna provide some opportunity, provide some background on the projects that are land use projects, and then I will spend some time talking about the transportation projects. Back in December, when we spoke with you, one of the key things that I heard was that we really needed to have clear criteria for how the projects were moving forward in the decision-making process. So, the things that we looked at, as we were reviewing the different projects, were staffing and financial resources, how much staff we had available, whether or not the project supported county strategic goals. We looked at what current initiatives there were, whether or not the state, or the region, or other organizations were directing us to do work that we were required to do. The, I guess, the other one was, does the project support other projects we are already working on? Does it build off of, and that we can find some synergy there? And then, the final thing was, whether or not we really also wanted to make sure that the project was a result, would result in a change to the zoning development ordinance, or the comp plan, or another planning document related to some of the work that the county does. So, I think that, I do wanna emphasize this, that, and we talked about this in December, is that this work, which is, that is on the work program, really is specific work related to projects that make those changes to the zoning development ordinance and county plans. There's a wide variety of other type of work that we do, and so, all of our staff time is not dedicated necessarily to this type of work. We also do coordination, we do tasks that support our different divisions, so in transportation, we do projects such as reviewing land, reviewing projects that come in for the road cross-section, and different things like that. So, it took us a bit to figure out, you know, how much time would be available for these type of projects, and whatnot. So, before I go any further, I just wanted to call out the materials that you have in your packets that we'll be talking to. The first is the spreadsheet, and this is the proposed draft work program for fiscal year 2018-2019. And what we tried to do is show across the top how these different projects that are being proposed kind of meet those criteria that we talked about, so you can have an idea about that. The other table, which is Attachment B, is one that you probably are a little more familiar with, this is the format that we've used in the past. And this is the table that we'll speak to, it has more information in it. When we talk about the projects, it'll, it provides more of a description of the project, kind of some information from staff, and whatnot. And so, on the very first page are the ones that are the recommended projects for land use, on the second page have the recommended projects for transportation, sorry. And then, following are the other projects that were proposed for the work program, or submitted for the work program, but we haven't included within our draft recommendation. So, there were a total of 43 projects submitted for consideration. We are recommending 14 projects move forward, and that's actually a, quite a ambitious work program. There's seven on land use programs, projects, and there's seven transportation projects. We do have additional FTE that's available this year, that wasn't available last year in the land use planning group, because they have been able to hire additional staff. They anticipate about 2.75 FTE of being available to focus on a land use projects related to long-range planning. We at, in, within transportation planning anticipate having about 1.5 FTE available specifically for transportation planning projects. There are some of these projects that overlap, that we need staff from both groups to work on the projects. So, I covered the public outreach that we did, we'd really reached out far and wide to be able to get this information, and here at the tail end, to be able to get information and let people know that we actually had a draft work program. We advertised it, it's been on the county webpage, we let people know who had submitted comments, that we were having this meeting, and we also notified all of the people who we had originally notified when we were starting to take comments. So, at this point in time, I am going to turn it over to Jennifer, where, who will be able to talk a little bit more about each of the land use projects that we're proposing, and then I'll talk about the transportation. Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
Right.
Good evening again, Jennifer Hughes with the Land Use Planning Division. There are seven projects, seven land use projects that staff is recommending approval of, and again, those are on the first page of Attachment B. There are, of course, a number of other projects that were suggested, I'm happy to talk about any of those, but I'm gonna highlight the seven that we're recommending. I do wanna draw your attention, though, to a packet of materials that I put on your desk tonight before we started. Those were letters that have come in from the public since your packets were mailed last week. Nearly all of them are in support of the Rhododendron Community Plan Project, which is actually the very first one in the For Future Considerations section, that's on page three of Attachment B. And then, the first letter, or email, was from a woman who's interested in tree protection, so I think that would fall under the first project in portions to be completed as part of recommended projects on page three. So, there's nothing new in your pile as far as new projects, but support for some that are not on our list of the top seven, so people would like to have those moved up. Project number L1, the Zoning and Development Ordinance Audit, I know you're all familiar with that at this point. We anticipate that next fiscal year will be the final year of the ZDO audit, it makes me very happy to be able to announce that, 'cause we've been working on this for a long time. That is, land use planning staff's highest priority is to, to really kind of tie that project up with a bow, 'cause so much work's gone into it, and it's really, I think, important that we, we finish strong and complete that, so that the code is a really solid, workable document by the time we're done. The second project, L2, Park Avenue Stationery Development and Design Standards, that was on our work program for, is on our work program for the current fiscal year, and it was to seek grant funding for this project. We were successful in that, so, you know, although I am saying this is a recommendation, essentially, the county has really already committed to doing the work, because we've applied for the grant and received the grant, and we're now moving forward with, with the community in attempting to obtain a consultant and execute an agreement with Metro for that funding. So, that's the second project. L3, Marijuana Ordinance Amendment, yes, we may be coming back to you with another marijuana project. This is actually coming from feedback that we've gotten from the Board of County Commissioners, they are interested in having a conversation at least about limiting the number of marijuana production licenses, so the number of OLCC licenses, or Oregon Health Authority registrations for medical marijuana, that you could have per property. So, there are some situations where people are receiving multiple licenses, and setting up what, I guess, sort of informally, we've been calling, you know, kind of like marijuana condominiums, where they build these buildings, and then have spaces that they're leasing out to a lot of different licensees. It is resulting in some impacts that the board and the public are concerned about, and so that's the reason that that is on the list. If we were to pursue that, it would require a property owner notice, because it would be a new restriction. We're only suggesting that aspect of reviewing the marijuana regulations, but you'll notice that there is another entry further down on the list, where we got a request from the public to expand the hours of operation permitted for marijuana retailers. So, if you were interested in recommending that, you know, I think those two would end up being combined, and it would be one package. The retailing hours, though, were considered by the board when we adopted our regulations, and they very intentionally restricted the hours to less than what's permitted under the OLCC licensing. So, that was really the reason we didn't think it needed to be revisited at this point. Project L4, Short Term Rentals in Single Family Residential Zones. This is one where I think planning staff has known for some time that there are some, how should I put this, there's a, perhaps a lack of clarity in our code, but generally, we believe that our code says that you can't do short-term rentals, so things like Airbnb, VRBO, vacation rentals of single-family dwellings, just as an accessory use to your single-family home. And, there is some interest, we're certainly getting lots of questions from the public, and it's getting some interest from the Board of County Commissioners in looking at whether we want to explicitly provide for those, and if so, what sort of regulations would be involved. We do anticipate that that project would take a significant amount of resources, you can see we've got it at .5 FTE, essentially because we've learned from the experience of other communities that this can be a contentious project, and that it has a lot of sort of overlapping considerations with other divisions or service providers, you know, whether it's the septic folks, the tourism folks, the building code folks, so there would be a need to have quite a bit of coordination involved, which is why we have that set at the .5 FTE. Project L5, Revised Policies on Changes in the Low Density, should say, on Comprehensive Plan Changes and Low Density, excuse me, Zone Changes in Low Density Residential Zones. This is coming, actually, there's two sources for this. One is a decision that we actually got on a specific case, where our comprehensive plan policies were interpreted in a way that staff had not historically applied them, hearings officers had not historically applied them. And these are the plan policies that dictate, if you're in an urban, single-family residential area, which specific zone is applied to your property. So, it could be anywhere from an R2.5, which is a 2,500 square foot average lot size, all the way up to R30, which is a 30,000 square foot lot size, and there are policies that guide where you fall within that range. So, in part, this is to address this court case that we felt sort of muddied the waters a bit, in terms of how these policies work. But then, in addition, we have had requests from the community, and you can see that there, Jennings Lodge CPO, Grove Community Council, and the McLaughlin Area Plan Implementation Team are all interested in having us evaluate those plan policies, and look at restricting upzoning in established, single-family residential neighborhoods. Policy, or, excuse me, Project L6, Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulations for Rural Areas. There are two pieces of state legislation that have passed related to accessory dwelling units in rural areas. The county already permits accessory dwelling units in our urban, single-family residential zones, but at the state level now, there's one piece of legislation that is optional for counties, and there's another piece that is mandatory, and they don't cover exactly the same areas. But at a minimum, we'll need to do something, because the one that's mandatory is actually going to take effect July 1st, and so we'll just have to be applying that directly until we get regulations in place, but we will need to incorporate that into our zoning ordinance. The second piece of legislation is optional, and so there'll need to be some discussions with policymakers about which way we wanna go on that. And then, finally, L7, the Housing Needs Assessment and Buildable Lands Inventory. The issue of the housing supply and housing affordability crisis is really kind of at the top of everyone's mind at the county right now, the board is very interested in that, and there are some efforts going on, not really directly related to, at this point anyway, any amendments to the zoning ordinance or the comp plan, but looking at a Housing Needs Assessment and Buildable Lands Inventory for the entire county, not just so with our partner cities, not just in the metro area, but also rural cities. And there's a task force being put together at the board level to look at housing affordability and homelessness. So, our idea is that we're going to need to have some staff assigned to that, at least in a technical capacity, although we would not anticipate that it would be resulting in recommended code changes for this coming fiscal year. You might see something in the future.
So, I'll talk a little bit.
Before we go to you, Karen.
Yes.
Sorry. Jennifer, the Rhododendron piece is going to come up, so maybe you could just talk about that a little bit, the reasons for why it wasn't included.
Right.
And I'm also curious of, did you do any assessment of the amount of FTE that it would take to carry that forward? That would be helpful, but no.
So, I'll talk about it from the land use side, there's also a big transportation piece, and I'll defer to Karen on that. From the land use perspective, staff wasn't, I mean, I, it's not that we haven't read through the, the information that's been submitted, but we weren't really clear on exactly necessarily what they were looking for that would require, for instance, zone changes, or changes to the, you know, the standards that apply in Rhododendron. So, we did schedule a meeting with the head of the CPO, who you've got, Steve Graeber, you've got several pieces of correspondence from him in your packet. And I think, you know, it was a, I wasn't at the meeting, but as I understand it, there was, you know, sort of information exchanged, and he was provided with some follow-up information after the meeting about the zoning. But it's not entirely clear to me that, based on their goals, that this is really a land use plan that they need. I'm not dismissing the fact that they want that, and certainly, they have a lot of passion for this project, and I don't wanna minimize that whatsoever, but I, I think, given the zoning that's there, there's already a great deal of flexibility in terms of what can be done. The entire community technically of Rhododendron is zoned rural, tourist, commercial. There is a lot of residential, rural residential zoning around it, which I know, they feel like they're all part of the same community, but in terms of the county, looking at some sort of plan for the area, it's really, it would be that sort of commercial core, because we're very restricted in terms of what we can do in the rural residential section of it. So, the commercial core already allows, it allows resort accommodations, hotels, motels, retailing, offices, there's, you know, parks, there's a broad spectrum of things that you can do in those zones. And I think most of the concerns that we're hearing really revolve around Highway 26, the safety issues, the feeling that it, they would like it to be more, have more of a community feel, and that that isn't really happening because of the nature of that transportation improvement that runs through the middle of their community. So, I think what we're thinking, and I'll turn it over to Karen now, is that we may really be at the point that what they need is some money to actually do something on the ground, that it's really more about some kind of capital expenditure than it is about the need for another plan. That that's probably the higher priority, anyway. And the other thing, then, is whether we could act as some kind of a grant, sort of grant-seeking agency for them, you know, to help them find some funding to do some of that. There may be some opportunities there, where it wouldn't really be our project per se, but, but kind of a fundraising issue, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll add to that, because Jennifer and I did speak about this. And it is a challenge, we're trying to figure out, kind of, where does it fit in, and looking at what the vision is that they want, and what is it that's keeping them from getting the vision, right? Where are the obstacles in front of them? So, you may recall that at the end of 2016, early 2017, we actually adopted the Villages of Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bicycle.
Right.
Plan. And so, within that plan, there are specific projects that call out, let's see, I had it here, but the, specific projects that call out exactly what the community wants with regards to crossings of Highway 26, and looking at consolidating accesses, and, and putting in pedestrian facilities and streetcap facilities. So, within our plans, we have projects that say, this is what the community wants, and this is what needs to be done. So, in order to see change in that neighborhood, it kind of happens two ways, one is, as a private developer will come in, and they'll look at the zoning code, and then they'll build to what the zoning code says and standards, and then you potentially get a sidewalk for that particular piece of property. The other way is if you go in and do a capital project, you get the funds to be able to construct a whole length of sidewalk, or frontage improvements. So, it's, it's two different things right there. And so, as we were trying to look at this request, we were looking, well, the plans have what's desired. Some of the challenges, though, is that we have this other entity, and that being ODOT, and Highway 26, right, which is their facility, and being able to engage them in the conversation about starting to do a design, and ultimately, I think this is part of what they want, be able to design that facility so that it can have a construction project, right? And so, where does, and typically, design falls in the construction part of a project, and not necessarily in the plan part of the project. So, yes, we actually talked about this as well, it was brought up, we had a conversation with the Board of County Commissioners a few weeks ago, just to give them an update on where the land use, long-range planning work program is, and it did come up as an issue. So, we have been trying to figure out, are there other resources out there that we can look at? The Transportation and Growth Management Program has kind of smaller projects, because in essence, we've already done the bigger plan project, but maybe there's a, an outreach, or an amendment, or some, something there that, and I almost think it's like facilitation with the different, you know, ODOT and Clackamas County, something small, to be able to figure out what really is next. So, that's kind of a little bit of background.
Thanks, it's a tough one. Before we move on, I just wanted to pause and see if anyone has questions for Jennifer before we move on to Karen. Do we, do we just keep going? Mike?
It's pretty simple to put everything in FTE, but I'm having a tough time understanding how some of these projects are going to take, for example, let's take a look at the Marijuana Ordinance Amendment. That's got a .25 FTE, which works out, I'm assuming that's on FTE for a full year, right?
Correct.
So, that's 12 and a half weeks, 40 hours a week, we're talking over 500 hours there for that particular piece, is, I'm just trying to understand why something like that would take that amount of time.
Right. So, it is based on a full year, FTE isn't actually, it's 2,080 hours is an FTE, but there's a statistical subtraction for holidays, vacation, et cetera, time off. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but it's closer to 1660 or 1680, that's sort of statistically what we assume for that FTE. So, it is still a lot of time, but it's a little less than what you might think. And it's project from beginning to end, so, yes, there's some code drafting, there's some outreach, there are mandatory legal notices, there will have to be a notice designed and mailed out to about 16,000 people, telling them that we're doing this. It then results in hearings, which I don't, some of you recall, 400 people at the Abernathy Center in Oregon City with half a dozen staff people there managing flow. I don't know if that will happen again, but it could, this is an issue that tends to stir people up, so we're assuming a significant amount of public, public input. So, it's managing all of that, it's public hearing, probably, potentially a study session and a public hearing with the planning commission, so you're preparing packets, posting it on the website, you know, sending out sort of some sort of outreach to folks that it's happening. Then we do the same thing at the board level, study session, public hearing, and that's assuming it can be done in one, sometimes it can't. Then you've got the sort of after that, you know, minutes, and sort of closing down the file, you've gotta do a board, an ordinance, so these have to be adopted by ordinance, which means we go back to the board for a business meeting. So, you've got packet preparation for that, then you attend the business meeting, then all the official documents have to be updated, posted to the web, paper copies updated, so even though it seems relatively simple, these things are hugely time-intensive, which is, you know, I guess, kind of unfortunate, but it's because all these, so many of these steps are legally required, and then other ones are just advisable, because we need to do a certain amount of outreach. So, that's where it comes.
Has anybody taken a little bit of time to see about streamlining the processes, or has that already been done? I'm just curious about how you're, how you're set up and function.
Sure. You could streamline, I mean, a lot of those things are legally required, so there are certain things we have to do. If we wanted to streamline it, we could not have study sessions, not have policy sessions, just go straight to hearing. You, you know, the policymakers could make a concerted effort to get things done in one hearing. That did not happen with marijuana when we did it before, it took multiple, this is a smaller-scale project, so it, I'm not saying it couldn't be done in one hearing, but doesn't always happen. We can't really control how much public interest there is, and I hate to say we could streamline it by doing less outreach, but that would be the reality, right, if you don't publicize it as much, but some of that's legally required. We have to do the postcard on something like this to all the folks, because it's a restriction. We have to notify the state, we have to notify our community planning organizations, we have to do a newspaper notice, we have to have hearings at the planning commission and the board. Certainly, we have to update the documents, we could choose not to put it on our website. I mean, there's things we could do that would be less steps, but I don't think the process is inefficient, I think it's as efficient as it can be, given the commitment to doing all of those things. So, it would be a matter of which things would we strip out.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions on land use? Thanks for your patience, Karen, we'll move on to transportation.
So, the set of transportation projects, in some ways, they're, they're a little similar. I wanted to highlight the fact that, for the projects, both on the land use work program as well as the transportation, some of them don't, encompass, some of them encompass more than a year. So, similar to the Park Avenue project, we have projects on our work program that actually take more than a year to complete. And that is the Safe Routes to Schools project. So, that is a project that we received grant funding for a year and a half ago. It's a three-year project, so we're in the second year of a three-year project, and we're working with a consultant to implement that particular project. The, and really, and I think I'll just take a half a second to talk about it a little bit, it's been pretty exciting, what we're doing, is we're developing, the project is to address 12 schools over the course of three years, develop both the action plans, which are identifying the infrastructure needs to improve pedestrian and bicycle access, but it also involves doing outreach and engagement activities at those schools. The second project is the Damascus Area Transportation Needs, this is something that you may be familiar with, is the fact that when Damascus disincorporated, there actually is quite a few roads that are county roads, and they, since we were updating our transportation system plan when they were a city, we did not have those roads within our overall transportation system plan analysis. So, we will be going through and looking at the area that is in unincorporated Clackamas County, outside of the area that Happy Valley's looking at closely. County, outside of the area that Happy Valley is looking at closely, and being able to identify what capital project needs are in that area over the next 20 years and fold that into our transportation system plan. Another project that kind of bridges the fiscal years is the Canby Ferry Toll Bridge feasibility study. It's a project, actually, I went to a kickoff meeting today for, and we anticipate that it will go through the end of December. So, it already has funding, it's actually being funded through our transportation, construction, and engineering team. They're looking at, they, the Canby Ferry is expensive to maintain, and this is just a feasibility study to be able to get an idea of what the cost would be is if a bridge was implemented there, and if they did collect a toll, would it be able to recoup the cost of replacing the ferry with a bridge? And so, it's just feasibility and to be able to provide information to our team. The fourth item actually is an item that, the next three items are this way. So, what we experienced in the transportation planning team last year, we have a total of three people besides myself on the team, two of those people actually, one retired and another took another job. So, there are a couple of items here that were actually on last year's work program we weren't able to get to, but now we're fully staffed up again, so we're hoping that we'll be able to address these items. So, one is the Art Road Extension Goal Exception. It is a priority of the Board of County Commissioners to be able to look at a way to provide better freight access into Canby. We have a goal exception for Art Road Extension, but we're really looking at a, a different alternative to that that actually would be more direct into the industrial area. And so, that would require us re-looking at that goal exception. The fifth item is an item that has been on the work program for a while, and the reason we haven't moved forward with it is because there, there's actually been conversations around the urban reserves that need to be completed before we move forward, as well as not just completed, but all of the appeals process has kind of gone through. We received funding, so we were awarded funding, we actually haven't gotten the money, we won't get the money until we do an IGA, and when we anticipate starting the project, but we were awarded money to do work to be able to look closer at the infrastructure needs in the Stafford area. We do anticipate that that would be a project that would probably start, if it did start, it would probably start about January of 2019. Let's see. The sixth item actually is an item that came from a previous project. It was an outcome of, we had looked really closely at the Clackamas Regional Center and applying a multi-modal mixed-use area application there. There's a state provision that would allow that to be able to encourage the type of standards appropriate in more multimodal areas. One of the outcomes was trying to understand if there was a way that we could identify off-site improvements to the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, similar to the way that we might have a requirement for off-site improvements related to the automobile system. So, we require a signal that's off-site because the transportation system, the transportation impact assessment that is done with that development, it shows that there'll be failure. Sometimes there are off-site improvements related to the pedestrian and bicycle network that might be needed, but we don't really have that ability to make that assessment. So, we were going to look at that a little bit farther. And then, the final project that is on the list right now is that we've been working, actually, talking with our Parks Department related to a Barton Park master plan. Out on Barton Park, actually, our transportation maintenance facility is located kind of in the middle of Barton Park. And Barton Park also has been, the Parks Department, they had been looking at doing an overall assessment, reassessment of the master plan there. Barton Park is actually located directly adjacent to the Casadero Trail, and then there's also a piece of property that Metro owns that's adjacent to Barton Park. So, we wanted to be able to look at all of those issues together. This is a project that we've been talking about scoping with them, so we would be doing that in partnership with Barton Park. So, those are the seven projects that we had identified to be included on the work program. There are two projects down at the bottom that I wanted to highlight that, again, may influence the amount of work that we're able to do. A lot of, I think we and the transportation planning group are influenced by grant finding cycles and what type of projects that we actually get funding from the outside to be able to implement. I don't know if you have heard about a project that's called the Lake Oswego Oak Grove Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge over the Willamette, Willamette River. It has been, it has been in the media a little bit lately because we have put in an application to be able to do a feasibility study for that connection. And it also is kind of interesting because the application actually would allow us, if we were successful, to be able to start on this project within the next fiscal year. And for transportation planning stuff, that doesn't happen quickly very often. But this, again, would just be a feasibility study, the purpose, this is a project that has been in our plans for quite some time, and the project would, would really, the purpose of it was, would to, would be to figure out if it would be feasible to build a new bridge in that location. Previously, there had been the thought that there would be a bridge cantilevered over the existing rail line, which, which was proven to be a pathway we couldn't go down because of the railroad, was not interested in that. So, we would be looking at whether or not there are potential locations on each side. We would be looking at what the cost it would be to actually build the bridge, and we would also be looking at a future, kind of who would own and maintain the bridge. So, it would really be able to provide direction into the future for that project. So, it is possible that we'll get funding to do that. That's a project that, again, would happen more in 2019 than in 2018. And then, finally, there is a project that we're also seeking funding for, it has to do with transit planning for the county. Again, if that, that is something that, that we are awarded, it wouldn't be implemented until the end of 2019. I, I think I will make the comment because it was brought up about FTE. One of the things that you may notice, we have a, a fair amount of the work that's done in transportation planning is actually we're project-managing consultant teams. And so, that's why we might see a .2 FTE, pretty much when we're managing a consulting team, it takes about .2 FTE to be able to do that. There are a variety of different aspects of a project. Our projects really have, probably about a third of the projects, these larger projects, are public engagement, working with advisory committees and things like that, but they only take up a portion of the time because then we're also working with a consultant team, working on those projects. The projects, and so, with that, I would say, yeah, almost all, except for project number six, T6, we would be working with a consulting team on. So, with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Karen. Are there questions for Karen at all?
I have one.
When these projects get approved, or the work that you've got scheduled here, do you develop a, a plan for each one of those with milestones? And can you report back to the Planning Commission with those events?
So, typically, how we engage with the Planning Commission is we will either do a, a study session or a policy session with you to provide you an update of the project. And then, secondly, when the project results in a, a change to a plan or the ZDO, we'll have the public hearing here. So, it's more of a light touch, and depending on the project and your, your interest and engagement on it.
Okay.
Can you say which schools have been identified for the Safe Routes to School program?
So, we have worked with, let's see, that's like a test, but I can tell you that, that we have worked with Welch's Elementary, that was done the previous year. We have worked with a Lotwick Come and created a plan with them. We have worked with Oak Grove. We have worked with Bill Quest. We are currently working with River Grove, and I know that they are reaching out to Malala, schools in Malala. Yeah, it, it's been a very interesting process to see. So, each year, we try to identify the next four that we're working with. And it takes kind of this, this synergy or this blending of interest at the level of the parent-teacher organization, as well as the principal, to be able to want to expend the time and energy to do this, as well as the staffing. So, all of those things need to come together for a school to be interested in being a part of the project. But we have been working with those different schools. The, the focus has been the North Clackamas School District is really where we had, when we applied for the grant funding, we were saying that we were going to be working with them, but we would also be partnering on some of our rural schools. So, that's how we laid it out.
Okay. And then, my other question is, you had mentioned that there was some overlap of the staffing for some of the projects between transportation and land use. Can you highlight a few of the ones that would require both staff?
So, the, the Art Road Goal Exception is an example of that, where we would really need their expertise as well, and we had accounted for that. You can see on, in Attachment A, we did talk about the, a land use FTE that would be required for both the Damascus transportation and Art Road projects, but we also use the land use transportation expertise as we move into any changes in the zoning development ordinance that are a result of one of these projects, and that they need to part, they willingly partner with us. Yes, enthusiastic, I would say so. As we bring that, kind of how it works with the zoning code, and then bringing it here to the Planning Commission and whatnot, that's always a partnership. So, so each of these projects do have the touch of land use staff.
Okay.
Hi, I see that you have two feasibility studies for crossing the Willamette. One is Canby Ferry, and the other one is bike pedestrian. So, I'm just curious a little bit about that. The Canby Ferry one, the feasibility study is for a toll road. Why is it a toll road instead of just a bridge to cross?
Yeah.
And then, the bike one, why is that one not a toll or some other way to pay for itself when that must be the reasoning for the Canby one?
So, the Canby Ferry, really, the reason why the toll is being considered is that there's currently a toll that's collected to ride the ferry. And so, the concept is, is if they are, they would be looking at replacing, in essence, the structure, instead of replacing the ferry. It costs over $400,000 a year to maintain the ferry, and they're constantly losing money on it. And so, in, in essence, it's replacing like with like on toll. They are going to be looking at the spectrum of what the different tolls may or may not bring, but it would only be feasible, it's my understanding, it, it would only be feasible to replace the bridge if they were looking at a toll to replace it. We don't have in our budget, I think the point would be, we don't have in our budget to necessarily fund being able to replace that bridge.
And I recognize that the bike pedestrian bridge, if they were to do that, is probably, you know, a difference of magnitude between a car bridge. But, but funding for that one, I'm assuming the feasibility is a portion of that, too.
So, correct. So, really, there, there's, there's a great deal of interest in this Lake Oswego to Oak Grove Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge. Tons and tons of support from both sides. But there are a lot of obstacles and unknowns, and a lot of those unknowns involve the, not just how much it would cost, but how it would be funded. A bridge like that is, has access to, has potentially access to more, again, grant funding sources, outside funding sources than perhaps a rural bridge would have. There's just more funding that's focused into the urban area. But in the long-term picture, it's unclear if that would come from Lake Oswego or would it come from Metro or whatnot. So, all of those little details would, would be looked at during the feasibility study.
And can you tell me what the next step is after you, or after the feasibility studies are complete?
So, the, part of what the feasibility study will tell us, I'm going to talk about the ped bike bridge one now, right, is what the next steps are. But it would definitely require a more detailed analysis of the environmental impacts, and an environmental impact statement. It would require being able to start doing design, but it would also require being able to identify funding, ownership, all of those pieces to be able to move that project forward.
For that project, you said it's identified in the TSP already as a ped bike bridge. Can you explain why it's just ped bike?
Um, there, gosh, I think it has gone back to 1994 in the, one of the first pedestrian plans, that there was identified a need for a connection between Lake Oswego and the Milwaukee-Oak Grove area. I think that that connection has, for, from pedestrian and bicycle standpoint, has been much stronger. There hasn't necessarily been the analysis identifying the need for that automobile connection there. In 2013, when we did our update of our transportation system plan, again, that, that particular project actually received some of the most, most, the highest number of comments of interest in having a pedestrian and bicycle connection. But we did not, even during that process, individuals could submit projects, and having a automobile access was not something that kind of came up as either a need or an, an interest.
So, I have two questions. Start with the one on the very bottom around the transit planning. I'm just curious, the scope of that, is that county-wide or there are specific areas?
Really great question. So, I don't know if you guys had heard that during, in HB 2017, so HB 2017 was a transit, well, not a transit, it was a transportation package that identified, in 2017, that the state legislature passed. And it funded a variety of different things. And one of the things it funded was it identified an employee tax that everybody will, I think, starting in July, everyone started paying, that goes directly to expansion of transit service. So, there's this new funding source, actually, for transit service. And currently, there are conversations, they're working on the rules to make, to be clear about how all of this will roll out, but in the tri-county area, TriMet is working with the three counties to be able to identify which projects will be funded using this source, and then this will continue on into time. And so, with that, what we have really learned is, is that within our own comprehensive plan, there is direction to work with transit agencies. But there really isn't good direction or good information from the perspective of, from Clackamas County and what we would like to be able to have for our kind of transit service. So, this particular project really would focus mostly in the TriMet district, but it would also be able to talk with and address the, the needs of connections with our rural transit providers. We're very unique in Clackamas County in that we have, I believe, five different transit providers in the county. That's kind of different, a lot of counties don't have that. We have a transit provider in Sandy, Canby, Malala, Wilsonville, and TriMet, and then we also have the Mount Hood Express that is actually operated through Clackamas County Social Services. So, it would be able to work with and coordinate with all of those different agencies, but also provide information within the TriMet district.
Great, thank you. And then, I just have a, a brief comment on the second agenda item, which you, you know, I, I always have an interest in this whole Damascus planning. And one, I just, I, I appreciate the fact that it is there. We've, we've been struggling to, to make that a priority, and it's great to see. The one comment I have is to encourage everyone in the county to stop using the terms within the former boundaries of the city of Damascus, and, and there's two reasons for that. One, right, one is that, you know, there are other areas, Boring is an example, that are affected by that, but more importantly, you know, we're perpetuating a failed experiment in some ways, and there are communities inside Damascus and around Damascus that are trying to find a path forward and to reconnect, and referring it back to the old city of Damascus really hinders that. So, I would just encourage the county to find a different terminology around that, so. Any other questions for Karen?
I have a follow-up for Jennifer, but.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. In looking at the list of land use projects, excuse me, I think staff assess, staff's assessment is pretty good, and I trust you to understand exactly how much work you can bite off and work on, but I did want to look at the for future consideration list, particularly number. But I did want to look at the for future consideration list, particularly number NRD for enable small-scale manufacturing and production.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's probably an important thing to address sooner rather than later, even if it's not immediate, just because adding to the commercial capacity and jobs generation for the county is pretty important. So, I'd just like to put a pitch for that for sooner rather than later, if we can't do it this year, then next year.
Okay. If there is nothing more from the staff, no questions, we have some very patient people who have been waiting. So, we're going to jump into the public testimony. Before we do that, Mike, can I just ask a question of whether we have a resolution to the address issue that we raised? Is there a quick answer to that?
Yes. I reached out to county council, and he's unaware of a legal requirement that people have to give their addresses.
Perfect.
So, I know what the board has gone to in recent hearings that I've been to, is they ask people to state their name, and then sort of like what area, like Oak Grove or Boring, just to give some flavor.
Great.
But if people don't want to give their address, they're not required to do so.
Excellent.
And I thought we could rework the scripts for future hearings.
That would be great. And, and I know if, if people would like to get follow-up on this stuff, we need your address, and you could give that to Darcy. And actually, I think we have most of it here on these forums, but you don't have to restate it publicly, it sounds like.
Yes, just, just adding to that, if they're in a position where they want a copy of the final order or the final decision, we need that mailing address. Or if it's just they want staff to follow up on a particular issue, or the planning commission asks staff to follow up on a particular issue, then even a phone number and email would suffice.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, I have four people and the members of the public who have expressed interest in providing some testimony to us tonight. If there's anyone else, feel free to fill out one of these forums and let us know. I will go ahead and call you up to at a time. Feel free to come on up, and we'll get started. So, let's start with Melanie Farnsworth and Karen Bajorkland, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And you are?
I'm Karen Bajorkland.
Okay. So, let's, let's go ahead and start with Melanie and Joseph Edge. Thank you.
This gentleman was here before I was today.
You turn in your card first.
Okay. Hi, I'm Melanie Farnsworth, and I live in Rododendron. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to comment on this. And you guys went, Karen and, I think, is it Jennifer? You guys went over a little bit of the Rododendron issues. But as you guys know, in December of 2016, the commissioners approved the bike and pedestrian plan and actually elevated the priority because of the safety issues. Honestly, we have a mess up there now. It's good to hear you talking about the transit plan, because I have here, I don't know if you want me to submit this stuff to you guys, the Mount Hood Express is actually doing a study because they have had so many riders. They started in October of 1314. Their fiscal year is July to June, beginning of July to the end of June. And in 2014, that year, they had 29,167 riders. The next year, 1415, they had 41,144 riders. In 1516, they had 52,129 riders. 1617, they had over 66,000. And this year through February, they've, they've already got over 48,000 riders. I'm not sure if you're aware that at least half of these come through Rododendron. And at this point in time, the Mount Hood Express actually has a trailer. It's become a huge, huge recreational area. People will take their bikes up to Mount Hood and come down. The problem is, there is no designated stop. We've already got from you guys, you know, in the bike and pedestrian plan, the elevation of this, the priority, and I have the plan here, if you would like it. I'm more than happy to leave this information with you. We've just got a huge safety issue. It's not sexy like a bridge from Lake Ego to Oak Grove, but this is a huge safety and liability issue for the county. So, we do need time. We need an FTE. We have met with ODOT, with the commissioners. We've actually raised $10,000 on our own. We've done two community outreaches already. We are getting input from our community. Our community is actually concerned for the safety of the people who come through and the people that live there. So, basically, we're, we're a little bit upset, I mean, that you guys have put us off. And it's really, it would be wonderful if the county could help us get some funding, but everybody has come to the table at our meetings except for the county, because they say we're not on the work plan. I don't know what else to do, except to come and ask for your help.
Questions from the commission, from Melanie?
What, what exactly do you want the county to do? Exactly what is it you want them to do?
Well, we, we'd like help with planning, because we know that ODOT is going to do something, and we need to have, we'd like to have a say in it. So, what we would like to do is to have the county give us some FTE and help us with perhaps getting some grant funding. We need, we need to change a lot of the egress and ingress to businesses in Rododendron. There needs to be designated bus stops. Right now, there are people, some people go to the Dairy Queen, some people go to Mount Hood Food in General. It's very helter-skelter. And then this bus comes in with a trailer in the summer. It's a mess. So, we just need help to figure out the proper channels to go through. We thought we were going through the proper channels.
Well, it seems like I heard from the comment earlier that Highway 26 is a state facility, and that they would have a bigger input than the county. Am I correct in that?
The county and the state work together, right? But change on the, on, on Highway 26 doesn't occur unless the state is a partner.
Okay.
Right? And, and so, being able to continue to coordinate with the state and talk with them. But ultimately, I think what we're looking at is trying to find a way that the whole kind of cross-section through Rododendron sees change, and not necessarily one property at a time, right?
Yeah, there's a post office there. You can't even get to the post office.
Yeah, right, right. But, but, but through, what I'm saying is, is, is that it won't necessarily happen just through redevelopment, right? Okay? And that, and that won't necessarily help the safety issue. And what, what would help the safety issue is looking at how an actual project to change the way that the land uses interface with the road, right? So, this is where, as I was talking about, it's, it's that moving from this plan that has identified specific needs into a design project. And what resources are there for us to do that without actually having a specific capital project to do that? And so, I think that's where we can say that, that, that what we need to do is work with the state to see if there is that bridge type of project that helps us get more commitment from the state, the state, because the, you know, we, we experience what you experience when we go to the state, like, oh, well, we would like to have this crossing. And then they say, well, you know, you have to have the land uses that support that crossing to slow down the, you know, the traffic. And, and it's just us talking back and forth, because we, we do recognize that it is quite, there's a lot of different issues going on, especially with the transit and people trying to get, you know, people trying to cross the state highway, right? You know, to access transit, and there's a lot of issues there, but it is a state highway. So, ODOT is very much concerned about how and why you reduce speeds or create that environment. And Joseph's nodding his head, because he lives near a state highway, too, that has very similar experience, right? So, so like I said, we're, we, we are trying to figure out a way that it isn't just the county, actually, that's engaging, that it's actually the county and the state.
It's, the county has been absent. The state won't talk to us until you put us on the work plan.
Yeah.
So, the county is the only missing piece here.
Yeah. And, and part of it can be that I think what we're saying is, is, well, it's not, it's not an item, so as I had introduced, our work program includes items that change our plans. So, what we're saying is, a change in the plan isn't what's needed. Additional coordination is needed.
Execution.
Right.
Execution.
Building of the projects, yeah. And so, I think that we still can work with you, and we can work with the state, even if it's not one of these projects. But we can also highlight, you know, there can be a highlight to the board that says, you know what, staff needs to work more with the community of Rododendron to identify ways to work with the state. I'm just not certain that putting on a community plan is what the solution is.
We need an FTE to come to our, our planning, I mean, meetings. We have done out, we're ready to do our third outreach to the community.
Christine, do you have any questions, thoughts?
I am, thank you for asking, processing as we go. I'm just trying to make sure that we're communicating directly and not missing each other. So, what I'm hearing from you, just to clarify this, is that you feel like without adding this, adding to the work plan, the concerns of Rododendron, that you see a way forward to facilitate and aid what they're trying to accomplish without it being specific to the document that's in front of us today.
I don't think that adding an item on the work plan, which would be specifically to change the, our comprehensive plan, is the pathway that's needed to address the concerns of Rododendron.
And can you repeat your name for me? I'm sorry.
Melanie Farnsworth.
Melanie, so, am I sensing from you that what you are wanting is to be added to the work plan for certainty? That you don't feel like without being on the work plan, that you will get what you need from the county?
And it's not me, it's the citizens.
Right.
Yes.
But on behalf of your community.
Correct.
And so, so assurances from staff, is that providing you any confidence?
If it's in writing, and they start coming to our meetings and show that they are going to execute the plan that was elevated to a high priority.
Well, and I do think that we have to realize, as we shift from planning to capital projects, we do have a list of capital projects on our transportation plan. So, I don't think we can make a commitment that we will be able to fund a capital project. Like, we can't make that commitment.
No, but you mentioned grant, help.
Right, exactly. No, and, and, and there may be grant funding opportunities that may be more appropriate. But I think that's what we're, what we're trying to say is, and the grant funding wouldn't necessarily be to be creating a plan.
But we need you guys, your involvement, without your, you've been missing.
Right.
We can't do anything without you.
Well, I'm.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
So, at the beginning of your presentation outlining staff's commitments and explaining the FTE, you talked a little bit about the other things that go into the total amount of time that staff is working. So, so the, the work plan's not everything staff does. So, it sounds like facilitating and working with communities like Rododendron is ongoing, it's not necessarily work plan items. Is that something that you could highlight in future discussions? You can say that's one of the things that staff is going to commit time to that may not be a work plan item.
So, we definitely could do that. And part of what we do is identify funding for different projects. And we can work with Rododendron on that. So, we can do that.
Marvelous.
So, I sympathize with you greatly. And it's not the same thing, but, you know, I live in Boring, where we have the springwater and casadero trails coming through, and it is being built out by the city of Portland and the state of Oregon, and to some extent, the county and metro. And the perception in our community is, you know, we're getting, it's a little overstated to say that we're getting run over, but it's being planned out for a lot of folks. And, and you guys are experiencing the same thing. The whole Portland community goes up to Mount Hood, and you're right in the path of that.
They have traffic jams there now.
Right. Totally get it. And the other aspect of, you know, I, I was on the commission when the Rododendron plan came through this past year, somewhere pretty, pretty recently, actually. And I think the Rododendron CPO in particular is one of the most active CPOs, the most active communities we have. So, we, as a planning commission, have to figure out, you, you guys have heard this from me in the past, where, you know, we're, we're often very grant-focused in, you know, the metro area, but then our outlying communities kind of don't get the resources to support that. And so, I would, I, I totally get the idea that it doesn't make sense for it to be on our work plan. I think we need to think of a way to provide this community some reassurance that, because I've been there, like, trying to get the state of Oregon to come to the table without the county having your back is, is hitting your head against the wall. And we've, we've got to figure out a way to help, help them get through that. So, there's got to be a way to maybe not put it in the work plan, but to give some written assurances, maybe it's a recommendation from our, our planning commission, the county commission of some sort, that, that we're going to try and figure out how to move some of these projects forward. I think it's important.
I mean, thank you. Because it's really, it's scary when you see the bus pulling off the road with these trailers and bikes and people. It's scary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for your time. Joseph?
Hi, my name is Joseph Edge, and I live in the Oak Grove area. I participate in several different advisory boards, commissions, and committees, but I'm not here representing any of them tonight, so I will not mention any of their names. However, I do want to speak largely in favor of the, the projects that have been requested by the McLaughlin Area Plan Implementation Team, by the Oak Grove Community Council, and the Jennings Lodge Community Planning Organization. Additionally, I would be remiss if I did not call out support for Project T8, the Lake Oswego Oak Grove pedestrian bike bridge. That's something that has been special to me, that I've been advocating for, for several years now. However, what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is short-term rentals and small-scale manufacturing. Basically, what I would like to request of the planning commission, obviously not tonight, but, you know, in two weeks, when, when you make your recommendation to send along to the board of county commissioners, I would like to request that you remove Project L4 from the proposed work plan and replace it with Project NRD. And the reasons for this are, are many, but ultimately, what we've been finding, there's been study after study for the last several years that have been indicating that short-term rentals like Airbnb have a tendency to reduce the housing supply that is available for people to live in. And given that we have a housing supply crisis right now, it would be very reckless to move ahead with a program that, whose end result would be to take viable housing units off of the market. And basically, it wouldn't necessarily take them off of the market, but it would create an economic incentive for the people who own those buildings or those dwelling units to make them available for other purposes, like short-term rentals rather than long-term rentals. And this has the effect of raising rents, increasing competition for housing. You can look at the studies that, you know, that have been done for larger cities at this point mostly, but, you know, there is a measurable increase in the rents and a measurable decrease in the, you know, in the, the housing units that are available for long-term rentals for dwelling, when Airbnb is, you know, comes in and, and people, you know, use Airbnb, Airbnb to rent, you know, their typically entire houses or apartments. And that's been the problem, is perhaps not a problem when someone rents out their extra bedroom, but when someone has an entire house, and they make that house available as a short-term rental, which has been happening in Portland, it's happening all across the nation, that house becomes unavailable for a long-term rental, and that exacerbates our housing crisis. And so, we really need to consider that quite heavily. If we move forward with the short-term, accessory short-term rental plan, it needs to be accessory units only, spare bedrooms and accessory dwelling unit. It should not be entire dwellings like apartments or houses, because those apartments and houses need to be available for people to rent. Otherwise, we exacerbate the, the housing crisis, we exacerbate the cost of living, the number of people being displaced. Now, the reason I asked to replace that project with the small-scale manufacturing project is because this has come up in project is because this has come up in my community quite a bit over the last few years. We have community commercial, C2 zoning in our little historic downtown area. And there's been a lot of interest from prospective investors of coming in and opening up different businesses such as brew pubs or bakeries. And what we've found out is that through the act of brewing beer, you are working, or brewing, you know, ales, you are working with primary raw materials processing. This is not allowed, this is a restricted use in the community commercial, as well as, I believe, the general commercial, C3, which is along McLaughlin Boulevard where we have, you know, a great need for revitalization. One of the other problems is perhaps like a bakery could process raw materials, you know, like wheat or, you know, whatever ingredients go into actually baking goods. They would have to sell all of those at a storefront in the same building in order to be allowed in the community commercial or general commercial districts. A model that is pretty viable and what, you know, when I've discussed this with potential investors, they want to be able to distribute. You know, they're still small scale, this isn't a huge distribution operation, but they want to be able to distribute to cafes. The brew pubs want to be able to distribute to other bars and taverns in the area. But technically, that's a distribution and you can't distribute from within the community commercial and possibly, and I think even the general commercial districts. And so, the Oak Grove Community Council, you know, this, we brought this before them and, and the Board of, I mean, and the, the Oak Grove Community Council Board of Directors. And there was a, a lot of support. There was a community event last summer, and this is exactly what we heard from people. They want bakeries and brew pubs, they want them in downtown Oak Grove where it's community commercial. I've heard from investors, they want to open up bakeries and brew pubs in downtown Oak Grove. They can't do it today. And it's not even that we would just have to request a zone change, it's that the zoning that fits in that district doesn't accommodate those uses. And so this is a great opportunity to help revitalize a, a neighborhood that desperately needs revitalization. The downtown Oak Grove, historic downtown Oak Grove Center is, i- i- is badly in need of some help. And, and we have people who are interested in investing in that area and bringing it up. And we have to tell them that they can't do what they want to do, even though that's what we want them to be able to do there. And so I would really, you know, respectfully ask that you replace the perhaps misguided project, you know, of, of being of, you know, of enabling accessory short-term rentals and replace it with the, the one that will create jobs, help revitalize, you know, communities like, like Oak Grove. And that's what I would ask from you at your next meeting. I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That was very good information. Are there questions from commissioners? Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joseph. Okay, let's move to, let's go ahead with Karen Bjorklund again and Michelle Landro? Probably pronouncing that name wrong. I can barely read it. Thank you.
So I'm from Rhododendron. I don't mean to beat a dead animal, but I thought I'd get up and speak anyway. So in 2016, I came down and testified for the villages at Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bike Ways Implementation Plan. And in Rhododendron, we kind of thought, well, when you guys passed that, it got everybody really excited and thought, hey, we can move ahead and do something about the safety issues up here in Rhody. And so I kind of feel like we were doing that, and, because you had mentioned doing things that further were already linked to another plan. So we kind of feel like we're doing that. We're supporting the bike and safety pedestrian plan. And the reason we asked to be put on the work plan was because we were told by other commissioners that that's what we were supposed to do. So it's a little confusing. And Steve also, we asked for one FTE, like Melanie said, just to have someone to guide us through the procedure, because that was, we were led to think that that was a good request. So it's confusing. I, I wonder if we had asked, and I'm just asking here, if we had asked for something like help with getting sidewalks in or help with the crosswalk or something, is that something more that you were looking for with this work plan?
Do you want to answer that, Karen?
So no, that would fall more in the capital project category.
Okay.
So, and I think, I mean, I just have to admit, we've been challenged with it too, to try to understand exactly where this fits, right? Because it, it, we, and I, I said this before, you know, the, a certain level of the planning with regards to identifying the need has been done. You know, we know, we're both on the same page here. We, we know there's a need. So the next step really is, how do we make, how do, how do, how do we start to address that need? And, and how do we address that need or be able to refine the steps that need to be taken in order to make that kind of capital investment happen? And then we have to do that within the framework of working with ODOT.
ODOT, ODOT totally supports us. They started coming to our Rhody Rising meetings right from the very get-go, and they told us that we need to work with the county.
Right. And so we need, it's like, we need to work, all three of us work together.
Right. So, and I appreciate your, your bringing it up and saying it's really important and being willing to work with us. What I'm curious is, how do we move forward from here then? How are you going to work with us? What, what do we need to do?
Well, I'll just, I'll just point out, we just had two back-to-back presentations, MAP-IT and, and Rhody, that have been coming to this commission for years.
Yeah.
And doing everything right to try and move these projects in our communities forward. And for one reason or another, they're not feeling that they're being supported by the county broadly, and they're hitting a wall against county policies. And, you know, and I appreciate the fact that that doesn't really have its place in the work plan, but we've got to figure out a way systemic, systemically within the planning department to figure out how to get these community organizations who are engaged and do, in trying to participate in the process, to help them figure out a path forward, or at least understand that they've got some people in the, in the county that are helping them with the process. I don't know what that looks like either.
We've been, we, we, there's a group of us that have met once a month faithfully for a year or so now. We've raised $8,000, just 25 bucks here, 25 bucks there with people around the community. We've got all kinds of these, you know, we've had community meetings, we're having a little festival. It's like, you know, and that's what Steve was asking for, was that one FTE to kind of guide us through and help us figure out where to go next.
It's a, the, I think you've seen in both communities where if you, if you just know the next step, you're willing to take it, but you need the county to help you through to figure out what that next step is.
Exactly.
And what the tangible pieces are.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thanks for your, are there any other questions?
So what do we need to do? How is that going to look?
It's a very good question. I, I think that as we deliberate as a commission, we will continue to have this conversation. We've got a couple of weeks to have a conversation with staff. I, I think, I think the staff have made a credible argument that it's not, it's not really a plan that you're looking for as, as much as there are components of, components that need to be put in place to make your community safer. And so the question is, you know, what are those? How they move, how, how do we find the funding? How do we find the resources to do that, right? And it may start with, you know, some sort of deliberate conversation that we, we put together, but we'll figure that out as we step forward. I, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you now. I don't think the staff do either.
We've had a couple commissioners come up to our meetings. They're not here tonight, but they've said that they were totally supportive of what we're doing, but then it ends there.
And, and, and we are, you know, we haven't stopped looking for a way to, to be engaged. And, and like I said, we'll be looking at really what more, as more targeted kind of opportunities to talk with ODOT as well as you guys about how we can find a solution to this.
I mean, ODOT's behind it. We're all about safety, you know?
Right. I mean, I think ODOT is behind the concept that changes in the street cross-section need to occur, and certain elements of ODOT are behind that. But there is a variety of different layers to ODOT that all need to end up being on the same page. So it, it's, it's like, how can we work with all of those different layers and ultimately get to a place where we can put together a project and find funding for that project so that we can see change?
Okay. So, and this is my ignorance, so since you guys didn't have a quorum tonight, this is going to happen again in two weeks approximately. You'll have another where?
Is that, when is the data, or have we set a date for when this is going to be on our agenda?
So your normal meeting would be two weeks from tonight, March 26, 6:30. So unless you choose to schedule a special meeting, that would be.
So it sounds like we will be having a meeting in two weeks and this will be on the agenda.
So we will be on the agenda again in two weeks?
This work plan will be on the agenda.
Yeah.
And I assume that there will be additional public testimony accepted there? Or are we going to close that tonight? That's a nodding yes. So if there are other people in the community who want to weigh in. But it, you know, just to recap, it seems to me that maybe the staff needs some more clarification from your community about the specific projects that you are most interested in move forward. And it seems like this community is in need for, I've been in this position where the county and the state are having some conversations over here, and then you've got the community over here, and nobody ever gets in the same room at the same time to have that.
I think that's what Steve thought he was asking for.
Right.
Was one FTE, someone to come and help us.
And it may not even be an FTE, it may just be some staff time to help you figure out the next step, so.
Exactly.
Let's give the staff some time to think about this over the next couple of weeks, and we can talk about it more at our next meeting. Does that sound good?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, Karen, welcome.
Karen Bjorklund, Chair of the Jennings Lodge CPO. You probably saw the Jennings Lodge CPO mentioned in quite a few proposals under the source of proposals on this list. Some we put in directly and some we find that were put on the list for us, which was great, because we are also a partner organization in the McLaughlin Area Plan Implementation Team, which involves several CPOs and a business alliance. So when the, I think when the planning staff created this document, they also put our, our organization with anything that, that was related to MAP and MAP-IT. And there's actually a nexus, I don't get to use that word very often, so thrilled to be able to use it, a nexus of McLaughlin Area Plan Proposal Meeting with a Jennings Lodge CPO Proposal Meeting with a Planning Division Proposal, which is what's L-5 that, that Jennifer talked about earlier, which has to do with looking at low-density residential policies, and in particular Jennings Lodge being interested in finding a way to, to hold the line on R-10 is, has been our, our piece of that. So there are several different issues that different groups have had, and this is coming together. So we would certainly support that being on the plan, that, that brings together something that Jennings Lodge CPO has been asking for, for quite a while. So getting back to Commissioner Pascoe's, you know, coming and asking and trying to make, make things happen, so that would be very good. But looking at the rest of, of all of the items, we, we did put in more than that, and, and we actually, you may not find this difficult to believe, but in previous years, we've actually even put in more proposals than this. So this is, this is fewer for us. But nonetheless, the question is, how, the question I'm having is how to prioritize all of these different things that have come through. And I, I want to note a couple of different things and kind of bring them together. One is that in the transportation plan, they proposed certain things, recommendations, and then they have some that they recommend if funding is available. Land use didn't do quite the same thing. They actually have three lists. One is recommended. The next section of the list, it, it doesn't say recommended if there are additional funds, it just says not recommended, but could be done in the future if there was time. And then the third category is the things that, that are, it's, it's kind, I'm looking over Jennifer here, a little bit of an odd title, because it says portions to be completed as part of recommended projects. So the way I've interpreted that is that that means there might be ZDO audit work that's already being done, and these projects could connect up to those, but the planning commission and, and the Board of County Commissioners would have to instruct them to do that. Is that a fair statement of what that means?
So, the portions to be completed as part of recommended projects really just means, and I think probably the staff comments are a good place to look for the detail, we will be auditing, assuming that the audit gets approved for next fiscal year on our work program, the current ZDO provisions that deal with tree canopy preservation and that deal with natural resource area protections. Those areas of our code, and it even goes, I think, further, protect and enhance natural habitat. So all of these things that sort of relate to what I would kind of classify as our environmental regulations or environmental overlay zones, all of those regulations are going to be audited next year, that's the schedule. But we don't, we do not anticipate, you know, broad new protections for those resources, which is, I think, what in fact you and others are asking for, at least to some degree. So as part of the audit, we would not, for instance, being, be doing a new tree preservation code with new standards for saving trees and how you get approved to remove them and all of that. It would be more a matter of looking through our existing tree code and saying, okay, this isn't clear, we need to change this reference, move it around, maybe tighten up some language. But it, it's not really what you're asking for, for the full scope of your project. And so essentially, part of it might get done, but not to the, to the extent that you would like. So if the commission wants a more extensive project with regard to natural resource protection or tree preservation, you would need to recommend that, that change to what we're recommending.
Thank you. So, building on that, building on that idea, how to prioritize all of these different things. So I was very pleased to see this year that the staff had created the list of criteria they were using, and that's at the beginning of, of their tables. But I don't think it contains everything, so I'd like to, and it's maybe fortuitous that there's a two-week break between this meeting and when you might consider this again, because I'd like to propose for your consideration some additional criteria you might keep in mind, and, and might want even ask staff to consider in, in how these things are prioritized on these, the second and third list from, from land use in particular is what I'm looking at. So for example, something that would, would be appropriate to add as a criteria for deciding the priority order would be addressing any situations that are creating dangers to the public. As an example, there are some marijuana-related issues that, that are creating dangers to the public, and so that, that would kick something up higher on the list theoretically. In addition, there might be community needs or interests or strong interests of, of community interest, strong needs of community interest. And we heard one tonight, Rhododendron CPO's interest. Clearly Jennings Lodge CPO has great interest in ours. We didn't do a letter-writing campaign for this because we actually had to have everybody write letters for something else that related to the commission this last weekend. So, but they had to prioritize. But if there was a huge demonstrated community need issue and interest, that, that might be a criteria to also consider. Also, if the change wasn't done now, whatever the change is being asked for wasn't done now, and, and then therefore changes happened that couldn't be undone later, that might be a reason to move something up in the priority. So as an example, if, if a proposal was about zoning and how you divide up or not divide up land, as an example, once you've divided it up, you can't go back to put it back together. So that's not, so putting something that keeps land together, if there's such a proposal, would, would need to be done sooner rather than later, otherwise there'll be no way to correct that after it happens. A very simple example is, some of the, a lot of these are about natural protection. A very simple example is, some of the, a lot of these are about natural protection. So let's just take trees as an example. Once you cut down the 200-year-old Douglas fir, you can't get it back. You, you'll have to wait another 200 years if you get something planted. So that might be a reason to move something sooner into the list instead of later because you can't go back and, and fix that after it's, after that has gone away. After the trees have gone away, the, the lots are divided up. Another criteria might be whether it is, whether it can be dovetailed with a project that's already going on, and that, that whole audit system might be an appropriate way to do that. And I think maybe the, the staff had that in mind, but didn't set that out as a specific criteria, but makes a lot of sense. Another possibility for adding a criteria is if, is being able to identify that there's additional funding and grants, because we've heard many times over the last few years that what, one of the things that's holding up the ability to do some of these projects is lack of staff time and then lack of grants that could get additional staff time to do those projects. So if there were some things that could get, that, that there were grants available for would be easy to do. And then is the, and I'm thinking in a way of the Rhode Island situation, is this the pa, is this the, the path to get, get the project done? In other words, if there is no other path available, and this is the only one, that might be a reason to move it up. But I very much liked Commissioner Pascoe's comments about thinking about the other ways to get things done, because as I look at the overall lists of projects, I can see, for example, there's one from Jennings Lodge CPO on neighborhood character. And there are some comments from staff. As it happens, Jennings Lodge CPO has done a lot of work trying to assess what the community thinks are the elements of our neighborhood character. So we actually have a list of those things. And I, and I know that the two top things on that list are the large lots, so 10,000 square foot lots and larger, one of the elements, neighborhood character, and the tall trees. There are some others, but those are two examples. Both of those could be dealt with in another way by other projects on this list. So if they were appropriate for zoning ordinance and got taken care of, then the other one might go away for those top elements of Jennings Lodge. So just as a, a way this stuff all works together and that there's more than one way to approach these. So the more that we can all work together in whatever forum is appropriate to figure out those ways, the more we can probably get all these things done that the community needs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I can also answer questions on the proposal from the CPO Summit, which is currently on, let's see, that's NRE, or the current, the current NRE, which is to put into the zoning ordinance some language that specifically recognizes the role of planning organizations, community planning organizations and what they do. And one reason for that, that the CPO Summit put in that proposal is while there is a 1973 Policy Board Order on creating community planning organizations, and there are mentions in the zoning ordinance of when land use notices have to be sent to the CPOs, there isn't anything between that saying what CPOs are, what they do, recognizing how, how they work together with the county. And that's one of the reasons that the CPO Summit thought that was an appropriate thing to do. So I can answer any questions on any of those things.
Thank you, Karen. Other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much. It was very helpful. We have one last person, Amanda Grezin, Grez, Grezin, yes. And I appreciate all of your indulgence. I've let, we've only had five people, so I've kind of let timing slip by, but this is the last one, and we'll move on. So, welcome, Amanda.
Hi, thank you. So I'm actually, I'm in the Jennings Lodge community. Karen didn't know I was coming here, and just so happens that it's about the Heritage Tree Program. And I'm requesting that the Heritage Tree Program be reinstated. It seems as if that it has kind of slowly started to be non-existent, and I feel strongly that it should still be an important part of our community. Just to put my role into why I do feel it's important, I am an architect, and I sit on the Historic Review Board, the committee for Clackamas County. So one of the last sessions we had for the Historic Review Board was that there was a large historic lot that was being subdivided. And within the context of the site, the historic write-up, the historic report actually stated two large oak trees that were an important part to the site, and those disappeared, and no one knows why they disappeared. But apparently there were some cuttings and remains of the tree on the site. So that's something that's a little concerning to me from the historic review standpoint is why are these historic trees that are actually written into a landmark project, why are they all of a sudden gone? It's one thing if they're sick and, you know, an arborist states that they are a tree that, you know, should go. It's, it's a, it's, it's something that may harm someone, so that's understandable. But when it's a healthy tree that just ends up getting cut down, but it's recognized historically as an important element, that's what concerns me a little bit. So from that standpoint, that's one thing that I do feel very, very strongly about. And why I think the Heritage Tree Program is an asset to the community in that regards is because this is that opportunity to protect those trees in another way. And it's not, right now, yes, right now, as the Clackamas County Heritage Tree Program is set up, there's not that much substance to it. However, let's take a step back and let's look at other communities, City of Portland, for example. So the City of Portland, and excuse me while I find the quote, but they actually state, here we go, they actually state within their opening website, so heritage, heritage trees are protected by city code. Once designated, no heritage tree can be removed without the consent of the Urban Forestry Council and the Portland City Council. So I'm suggesting that this is something that should be added to the language for the Heritage Tree Program. I believe that will help give it substance that it needs. And there's additional items that we could potentially add to this, and I'd be willing to send an email with those items that I think might be helpful to provide additional substance to it. It's also on the City of Portland's Heritage Tree website. But I find that that would help begin to mend those historic elements that we're losing and also kind of focus in on some of those things that are important to the communities, the community that I'm in, and I'm certain a lot of the adjacent communities. I also, as far as with the validity of, let's see here, well, anyways, that, I think those are probably some, some great starting points to work with, so.
Thank you, Amanda. And I would definitely encourage you to send that email. I think both we and the staff would appreciate any specific proposals that you might have.
Okay.
Other questions, comments from commissioners?
I have more response. I was formerly on the Historic Review Board. I just want to say I very much appreciate the perspective you come from with your comments as far as the heritage trees and part of why they're important, and it's something that I do want to look into a little bit more before our continued meeting. So thank you for your comments.
Excellent, thank you. Thanks.
Great. So I don't believe that we have any further public testimony, and since we are going to continue this, we'll continue our meeting. I don't think there's any reason to go into, to any discussions since we're going to continue public testimony next year. So with that, we'll continue the current meeting, continue the public testimony. Do we have other agenda items? We have the minutes that we were going to?
I don't think we can do any of that.
Which we can't even approve because we don't have a quorum.
I don't know.
So with that, I believe, unless Mike has anything additional, we're going to adjourn. Excellent. So we will adjourn this meeting, and we will see you all in two weeks. Thank you all very much.